Good evening. My name is Dr. Richard Montgomery. I'm at 2073 East 221st Street. Madam Council President, I have a statement for Mayor Gale and some questions for Law Director Sweeney. I would like to address two issues tonight. First, I'd like to make a comment to Mayor Gale about the continued concerns involving her management of the Euclid Police Department. Mayor Gale, in 2015, the Plain Dealer endorsed you, and their endorsement, they stated, "One of the challenges for your administration was to bridge the racial divide in a city that is becoming more diverse." During your tenure as mayor, this community has been in the local and national news for a series of egregious acts on black residents of this community by the Euclid Police Department. Nearly two years ago, I stood in this chamber and I asked you specifically to do a review of your police department's operations and report back to the community your findings. This exercise would have been helpful for you as Chief Law Enforcement Officer to look at how this department is operating and where there are areas for improvement, and it would give you the opportunity to be transparent with Euclid residents. To date, you have not presented a review of this department, and you have yet to hold the listening sessions in each neighborhood as you reported you would eight months ago. The lack of transparency and hands-off approach to managing our police-community relations has landed our city back into the news cycle yet again. I've spoken with Mr. Sanders, the owner of Playmore Skating Rink, as well as some parents of children who attended this event that happened last Wednesday, a Euclid police officer, and I've watched various videos of this event, and I've also heard from the terrified children who experienced this event. While there are many opinions about what happened on the night of June 12, 2019, here's some clarity on the systemic shortfalls that led to hundreds of children being stranded and pepper sprayed by Euclid police officers. On the night of the event, Mr. Sanders had paid for a permit to hold an end-of-the-school year skating event for middle and high schoolers. Mr. Sanders complied with Euclid Municipal Law, Chapter 761, Article 11, requiring him to hire two Euclid police officers, and he even went beyond that requirement and hired four additional private security guards. At the time that Euclid officers arrived on the scene, they were there to ensure that the event crowd had not exceeded 440 persons, which is the maximum allowable number of people who can be in the rink at any one time. When the fire and police officials arrived, Mr. Sanders had already admitted 250 teens into the event, and outside were several hundred more teens who were orderly and peaceful. The police and fire officials entered the venue and informed Mr. Sanders that he could only admit 100 more people. Mr. Sanders and other witnesses contend that these officials subsequently went outside to the peaceful and orderly crowd of teens and announced that only 100 more people would be allowed in. This was the point when the chaos began, as hundreds of youth rushed forward in line trying to be among the hundred admitted. As these young people began to be pushed and pinned forward, that is when the fights began. So in essence, the chaos was initiated by poor crowd management by the city of Euclid. Officers bypassed working with the owner to execute an orderly pickup process for youth unable to enter the venue, leaving children with no way home to be shot at with pepper spray balls and forced to run in every direction. Instead of taking accountability for this outcome and investigating the situation, Law Director Sweeney, you almost immediately shifted the blame to the business owner. Mr. Sanders did everything you outlined in your email to him on May 27, 2019. You stated that he must get a permit for this event. You acknowledge in your June 13, 2019, email to Mr. Sanders that the $100 fee for the permit was paid prior to the event. And here is where it becomes obvious that the city is attempting to scapegoat Mr. Sanders. Under the Euclid Charter, the city can decline to approve Mr. Sanders' request for a permit, but they have to do it within enough time for Mr. Sanders to file an appeal and have a hearing. Mr. Sanders was not informed that his permit was invalid until the day after the event. Mr. Sanders did in fact contact the police department and had been promised security by Euclid Police. On Wednesday, May 29, Mr. Sanders communicated through text messages with Officer George asking for officers. The message says, "Hey, George, can you help me get two officers from 9:00 to 1:00 on Wednesday, June 12, 2019?" Officer George responds, "Hey, Miguel, will do." The week of the event, Monday, June 10, Mr. Sanders reached out to Officer George to confirm that Euclid police officers would be present for his event, texting, "Hey, George, do you know if I will have two officers for Wednesday, June 12, from 9:00 to 1:00?" Officer George responds, "I'll get you two." "$35 an hour per officer. You got the permit?" Mr. Sanders responds, "Yes, I got the permit last week." On the night of the event, at 9:00 PM, Mr. Sanders sends a text to Officer George asking, "Are officers here?" Almost two hours later, Officer George responds indicating-
Dr. Montgomery, your time is up, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Can I just finish this one last line?
Your time is up, sir.
All right, well, I have a final question for Law Director Sweeney. It's clear that the evidence you used to file your complaint is faulty at a minimum. Will you tonight agree that it is time for you to withdraw that complaint? Thank you.
[applause] [applause]
So I guess no one's going to answer him.
One moment, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Laura Kramer-Rabidou. I'm the Assistant Law Director here on behalf of Kelly Sweeney. The incidents that we've been attempting to work with Playmore for many months to try to have some orderly events and allow him to run his business as a roller rink. We disagree with a lot of the statements that were made during this discussion. Obviously, the chief could definitely discuss it further, but we do have an application process that requires an application to be submitted 30 days prior to an event. That was in fact not done, and frankly, we want to work with Mr. Sanders to allow him to run his business as a roller rink and to do it in orderly fashion. It is definitely unfortunate that so many young children arrived at this event. Some of them were not even able to come in, and it became chaotic, and the police officers had to get involved at the 11th hour. But we definitely dispute the fact that this is an isolated incident. This has been going on for many months in which the city, the law director, along with several other members of various departments, have sat down with Mr. Sanders, have sent him emails, have tried to communicate with him to get this situation under control a little bit because we want him to be able to run his business, and we want him to have a successful business in the city of Euclid. And in fact, some of these events do not lend themselves to what we would think would be orderly and organized for young people to engage in nice behavior. Frankly, with the advent of social media, so many advertisements can get out to so many children that we're not, it was not the same back, you know, even just a few years ago. And so many kids come to these events, and there just needs to be some more organization. So we would be happy, as Mayor Gale indicated in her earlier comments, that she is meeting with Mr. Sanders tomorrow morning. We will continue the dialogue with him and to try to get this situation so everybody is happy with the result. However, I would disagree with the fact that Ms. Sweeney's complaint should be dismissed at this time, but again, that is something that we are happy to discuss with Mr. Sanders because we do want to work with him on this matter. But I would defer to the mayor, as well as the chief, to discuss some of the facts that went on, but we do have some lengthy documentation of police reports that are public record that people could take a look at, and we'd be happy to share with them.
Chief Meyer?
Thank you. Additionally, a previous event that was going to be there on May 17, I talked with Mr. Sanders. The texting, or the, sorry, the emailing and things, I like personal contact, that's just my style. I talked to him on the phone. That incident, or that event that he was going to have, I told him I was not going to allow it to happen that night. I want these events, I want there to be events that are available to kids, to youth. They have to be safe events. They have to be events where there's control, where there's security, and I understand that there's some hiring of the security, but there's no uniforms, they're not working for anybody. I don't know what their credentials are, what their training is, and there is a big difference between a security guard and a police officer. Having said that, I've been here for 24 years, there's several other officers. I worked with the, the roller drum is what it used to be, and I remember working as a young officer. I worked there every Friday, Saturday night before my, it was on midnights at the time, before my midnight shift, and it was very, the kids, they're kids. I understand that they're going to be kids, and they're going to be, I don't care what community and, you know, they have a lot of energy. So we would have these events, but they were, they were very timed and controlled. There was a time that would begin, there was a time that would end. Some of these events that are advertised, I can't, having 15 and 14 and 13-year-olds for events to go to 2:00 in the morning, the one that was planned that we didn't allow to happen this weekend following this event, they were advertised till 5:00 in the morning. That is not appropriate. Listen, I want the roller, the Playmore to be a complete success. I want everybody to be able to enjoy this city and enjoy that facility, but it has to be done safely. I've spoken with the mayor and the law department, I'll be part of those conversations too, but they want to, I want complete clarity in these, and complete clarity and defined parameters of what we expect, and if those aren't met, then you just won't have the event because I can't assure the safety. So I'm willing to be part of those conversations too, and we're hoping to have those tomorrow with Mr. Sanders, who, I don't agree with him on this incident, but I don't personalize anything. So I respect him as a man, and he and I had a decent conversation before. He knows I'm pretty direct, and I know, I understand his concerns too as a business owner.
Thank you. Next speaker, sir.
Okay, so in the interest of-
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Kareem Hinton, and I am actually not a resident of Euclid, but it was two loved ones of mine that attended that event.
Could we have an address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My address is 3312 West 56th Street, and that is in Cleveland.
Great. Thank you.
No, thank you. So just briefly, in continuation to what Dr. Montgomery was stating, he wanted to end on this note. On the night of the event at 9:00 PM, Mr. Sanders sends a text to Officer George asking, "Are the officers here?" Almost two hours later, Officer George responds indicating, "No one signed up. It won't be your fault for not having security. You got the permit and notified me. That's all that matters."[744.18][744.18][applause] So what I would like to state is this, is that it is obvious that this city does not have a great understanding in regards to history and the history of laws. There was at one time during the Jim Crow era in which it was unlawful for more than two black people to stand with one another or congregate on any city street. So when you understand that, even though we changed those laws, and thank goodness that we did, the attitudes still remain. People tend to get in a panic when they see amounts of black people congregating. So understand that for a lot of folks, this business owner's business, because it tends to draw in larger crowds of black people, it's not going to be something that a lot of folks want. And it's obviously something that officers tend to go in and deal with, with that ancient or historic frame of mind, we got to bring them to heal. Now, what I wanted to go on to say is this, is that this incident, as I've read it, as I've listened to, it has all the hallmarks of a setup for failure. A business owner that was proactive and reached out for police security but was not given it. My question is, how do you find the business owner liable for events sparked by police who brandished weapons, made pronouncements that caused a frenzy, and they did this without properly going through protocol? They did not properly consult with the business owner or the management on hand to actually know that they were in compliance because they had 250 people on the inside. Had they known that, I don't think they would have made the pronouncement that only 100 more people were going to get in. So my question is first that, that I would hope that you would ask yourself, but my next question is this, is that if this were the Memorial Day Parade, and there were some altercations that happened, would police have been brandishing weapons, and would they have been using the chemical weapons that they used that night? I don't think that they would. I mean, just really, ask yourselves that. And I wish that folks here would actually use a little bit of logic. If law enforcement felt that it was necessary to use chemical weapons on children, because that's what, that's chemical weapons. If they're using chemical weapons on children and they found it necessary to do so because they, the kids would not disperse, think about this logically for a minute. If they were dropped off by parents, where were they supposed to disperse to? Do you want them to run the streets of Euclid? Even in that, law enforcement is at fault. How do you find a business owner liable for that? And also, how do you find children? Because keep in mind, we have different sets of laws set aside for young people. That means they should be treated differently, but we know that their frame of thinking or their way of thinking is different than an adult's. So when law enforcement is interacting with-
Sir?
Yes?
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
When law enforcement is interacting with young people, you should act in the proper way, and you didn't do that because you don't value our children.[998.01][998.01][applause]
I'd like to answer. Sir, I do respect your opinion, and I do value the lives of every single human being. I have, I've spent 24 years doing it. I have teenage kids myself, so trust me, these concerns are not lost on me. The officers began to move all of the kids. They were told to go down to Babbitt Road, right at the end of Shore Center. It's a short walk down there to move them away. They were told to call parents, they were told to make arrangements to meet at that location. If they chose not to, there were many of the kids, obviously, in any given instant, the majority of those kids will cooperate with that. There are always those in the group that choose not to, where the behavior became problematic to include for businesses, where it became also illegal. So we have to address those things. But I would disagree with you. I value your opinion, but I would disagree with you. I and the officers that work for this police department care very deeply about children. I understand that we need to find some common ground, and I understand that, and I'm willing to have those conversations, but please, I do want everybody to understand that. I think that we're all, that's a commonality amongst us all. I would hope, obviously, that we all care deeply about children and each other.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Warren Hatchett. My address is 14671 Lartfield Drive, Brook Park, Ohio. I'm also one of the former owners of the Playmore. I guess, you know, I'm hearing a lot of things. I'm trying to get a clear understanding. When operating a business, if you're operating a business as a roller skating rink, you can have different events as roller skating. You can have adult skates, you can have kid skates, you can have a school night party skate. You know, this is a course of business, this is a way of receiving funds. Now, if you're going out of that category, such as a dance or something like that, I can understand a special permit, but I don't understand what you would need, a special permit, to do your everyday business, as long as it stays within the confines of what the business is. It's a roller skating rink. You know, there's different advertisements for different things, for different events. There's no need for a special permit to operate your business and to bring in different types of venues, such as adult skates, kid skates, what have you. I'm a little bit confused. The mayor had mentioned charges, and they were very vague. I would like to know what exact charges that are against the rink, not that they were not in compliance, what are they exactly charged with that they did wrong?
Are you finished, sir?
No.
Okay. Ask all of your questions, and when you're done, we'll then refer them to the administration.
Okay. As the previous owner, we've had incidents with teenagers. I've met with the previous mayor, the police, and, you know, we've had discussions. Teenagers and kids are not going away, okay? And not giving them something to do is not helping them, you know? So we have to find ways to make sure we can work within the system. When I had a meeting with the previous mayor and with the police chief, I've learned that you, in the city of Euclid, when they have football games, guess what? They have fights, okay? I don't see the city trying to close down the football games because of the fights.[1268.22][1268.22][applause] It's something you wouldn't even think about doing, you know? But yet, you still have football games, you still have fights, you deal with it. You take this situation and try to manage it and deal with it, not try to look to figure out a way to close something. So I'm, you know, a little bit passionate because, you know, most of us here are roller skaters, and it's something we love, you know, and it's a part of us. You know, I just want to say that, you know, it's, it's all well and good to look at a situation, but it's better to find a way to fix the situation. Thank you.[1317.65][1317.65][applause]
Thank you. Mayor Gale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The regular course of doing business at the roller rink is roller skating, and that's perfectly acceptable. Within their given hours, they do not need a special event permit, but when you bring in a promoter and you're targeting it as something other than just roller skating, then it requires a permit per our code. And when I mentioned earlier the need to look at our codes, we need to update that. And so it does call for when there's admission, when your, and Assistant Director Rabidou could run through all of the different elements of that, but it requires when there's additional people coming in and admission being charged, that there's additional requirements we ask for. Making sure that when people are coming into the community, coming into a business, that things are done safely. And I don't want, I mean, we absolutely want to work with Mr. Sanders and keep this business open, if he can follow and do it in a safe way, absolutely. We're not, the news, there was a nuisance complaint filed because there has not been attention to, we've had the police have to come out several times in this particular case, and, you know, we're hearing different things. This is part of what we need to clean up, our permit process. I have an email from Mr. Sanders dated June 12 saying, "Please excuse me, but I've just recently saw your email with the application attached. In fact, I'm still a novice at this application process. Nonetheless, please see and accept the completed dance hall permit application." The application was received the day of the event. There were additional emails earlier. I don't want to get into a back and forth and blame, this shouldn't be about blame. This is about what can we do better in order to, if there's things that we've done that we're not clear about in terms of that process, if the permit that we have needs to be updated to today's standards and codes, we want to do that. And I know City Council has asked to do that. We will be doing that, and we want the input from the business owner to do that because we want him to be successful. I'm sure nobody liked what happened. Nobody liked what happened on Wednesday night. That's not, but our, the reason that we have special events and we require them when we have events at Sims Park, we require them for Relay for Life, we require special events when the public is coming in so that our departments know what's happening, so that they're available to provide support. If there's food being sold, the Board of Health signs off. The piece that we need to make sure, and I think what happened here is they were communicating with different people, and so if Officer Harper said, "Yes, you know, we don't have an actual physical permit." In fact, the application that I have that was sent isn't signed. That's not, I don't want to get lost in the technicalities of that, although that's our, those are our facts. We want to work with Mr. Sanders, we want to work with Playmore, we want to work, if you have suggestions for how to do this, we want to provide, anyone who wants to provide activities for our kids, that's wonderful, but we need to make sure it's done so that kids, it's safe for kids. I don't, I mean, it hasn't, well, I won't show the flyer. I'm assuming you all saw the flyer. It's not a end-of-the-year school party. So we want to work with you. I want to provide events, we want to make sure that people can provide events that are positive to the community and positive and safe, and we're happy and I look forward to meeting with Mr. Sanders and being able to talk about what we do next. I don't know, Chief, if you've had anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I do too. I'm trying, I try to always keep an open mind. I don't want to get into, get into minutia, and we want to meet with Mr. Sanders, we want to look for solutions if we can find solutions. The issue is, and I agree with you, you run into this, okay, well, it's a skating rink. I understand that you can have these skating events. This is, this is different. These are, these are, I don't, like promotional companies that they bring in to run these events, they're a bit separate. There's a separate charge, they generally begin later at night, and the flyers are not necessarily conducive to, some of it not even to law, I mean, this one that was supposed to go Saturday night, the, again, the main event was from 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. That's not an appropriate timeframe. To mention that you have hookah and other, I don't know that these are, these aren't necessarily, these aren't the things I want to see. I mean, skating rink, I would love to see it be successful and safe. Again, are you going to have a business like this with juveniles where it's always going to be problem free? No, they're juveniles. They're kids. But we've got to, we've got to come up with a solution that's better than this.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth Perdue, 2119 Brandywine Drive, Euclid, Ohio. I speak as a advocate of the community, roller skaters, and promoter. I've been doing events since Keith had the roller rink for years, and I've never had an issue. I've done events starting at midnight till 5:00 AM. Never had an issue, never had to have a permit, never had fights, never. I do lock-ins with the kids on New Year's where the parents drop them off. That's not our fault if the parents drop them off, but they're in a safe place. These few little isolated incidents, it doesn't deem to close a roller rink where this is our safe haven. This is where we go to get away. You have hundreds of people that come here to enjoy roller skating. You have generations that come here to get away from every day. So this is, if you, if you see all these people behind me, they're here because they're passionate. All they seen was the negativity that was posted on TV, that was posted online, you know? So understand our concern. Miguel just recently brought this rink, and my question is, and it's a simple question, what deemed the rink from 950 people, 500 people per door when Keith had it, to 440 in over, in less than two months? That's question number one. So my thing is, how did it go from, I mean, it was instantly cut in half. How did it go from 950 people? I just want to know, because none of the floor plans changed, nothing was built, so I was just wondering, how does that happen? Because had it not, then those 100, 200 kids that were standing outside would have been inside. So that's question number one. To, well, I guess, Sweeney, but Mayor, you mentioned that you would be having a roundtable at Tizano's on the 30th. Is that a meeting to kind of discuss ways where in a collaborative effort, we as a community could sit down with policing, could sit down with you guys and create a way to control as opposed to close? You know, if you close, are you prepared? What is your plan to do with 400, 500, 1,000 kids that have nowhere to go? Are you prepared for them, that spillage, to go over to O Arena or the sports plant or Euclid Field? You know, are you going to shut it down as Mr. Hatchett said? Are you just going to deem it a new- Are you just going to deem it a nuisance when rioting or chaos, as the media put? Are you willing to shut that down? And I guess finally, my question is, are you, have you already pushed through the motion to have this facility shut down, or are you guys willing to work with us to get it right?
Mayor Dale?
Thank you. We're absolutely willing to work with, as I said, we're meeting, we reached out and have hoping, we were hoping to meet with Mr. Sanders today, but that was not able to happen. So we, I have a meeting with him tomorrow morning at 8:30. Our goal is not to shut him down, but the motion was, the paperwork was filed with the county. We're happy to, if we can work out something, a different arrangement, we want there to be activities for our youth. We have lots of activities for our youth that don't have these problems. And so our, my goal tomorrow with him is, what can we do so you can do this and be successful? The question about the occupancy was a fire department question. They went in, they went, and I don't know at what point, I'd have to look at that to know why it changed. I don't know if it was based on a code. That was a fire department ruling for the number of people that can occupy that building. I can get that information, and if you leave your name and number, or I can share that with him tomorrow. The meeting on the 30th is a common ground conversation, so that's not the specific topic, but I will say, anyone here who would like to have a meeting, we can do it in a group, we can do it individually. If you want to come in, we can set something up. I'll come over to the roller rink. If you, if any resident who has ideas for how we can offer these kind of events and do it in a safe manner, we want to do that. We want to provide activities. If the youth have ideas, what they would like to do, we can't do everything. And so if everybody does their part, we don't have events happen like that. If we have the right number of security officers, if we have the right, I mean, there's lots of things we can do to make sure, and we learn from things that happened at the football game. And the football game has officers that are there and school security guards that are there and different entrances and exits. And there's, I mean, there's things and other communities do it. We're not, you know, certainly always happy to learn from what other communities do. Our goal is not to shut him down. We don't want an empty business in our downtown. So anyone here who's willing, you know, at the end, I'm happy to get names, numbers, emails, we can set up. We can have a conversation tomorrow, if you would like, to talk about what has to happen there in order for it to be successful.
Thank you.
I answered all of the questions.
Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Dee Beecham, 25 East 217 Euclid. As a longtime resident of Euclid, I am concerned about the number and types of force used by law enforcement in our community. We have had a number of incidents that have drawn attention from the media as well as from community activists that indicate that our policies and practices may not make our community safer, but in fact escalate situations and put our community at risk. I would like to ask the City Council to review the current use of force policy and practices of our police department and compare that with some of the best-in-class policies and practices that have demonstrated increased community safety and security. Current policies are not protecting and serving our community well. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rob Loftus. I live at 533 Homestead in Bay Village. I emailed my statement to the clerk. I'm not sure if I was supposed to do that, but you got a copy. And then I've actually left it at home and left my reading glasses at home, so I'm going to have to stare at my phone. But before I read that statement, I want to note that the police chief mentioned several times that events after midnight aren't appropriate for children. When my daughter was 14, she went to an overnight at the North Homestead Mall. It was a lock-in, and, you know, she looks like me, and no one was pepper sprayed. I believe everyone there looked like me, or in that range, and no one was pepper sprayed. So I'll just read my statement.
Cora, please.
So I want to talk about the incident at the Playmore roller rink. I mostly just want to reiterate what other people were saying, reinforce it, amplify it. I want to put it in the context of the other stories that I've heard about the Euclid Police Force. So on March 13th, 2017, a Euclid police officer shot and killed Luke Stewart in a disputed incident, which began with Stewart sleeping in his car and somehow ended up with the officer inside the car with Stewart, trying to keep him from driving away. And the officer wound up shooting Luke Stewart five times. In August, an officer was shown on social media throwing Richard Hubbard III to the ground and pummeling him after what should have been a routine traffic stop. That same officer was featured in the podcast serial, throwing a man named Emeryus Spencer to the ground and tasering him repeatedly during an arrest for less than a gram of marijuana. And I believe in the podcast, the guy said that he thought that you were allowed to carry that amount of marijuana, and in fact, if he had been a few miles over in Cleveland, that he would have been completely legal. And that was all, that was all in the podcast that, you know, got national attention. And so now there's an incident where police try and break up a party and they wind up pepper spraying teenagers. In the report I read online, one of the officers is quoted as saying before the incident, "You know these guys are never prepared for this number of kids. They're supposed to hire Euclid officers for security. They didn't do that, and they're going to learn tonight what happens when they don't do that." That was on one of the local news reports. And so what I'm seeing is a pattern where Euclid officers anticipate and welcome the use of excessive force, and they're escalating when they should be de-escalating. And I find that troubling, and I want to know what the City Council is going to do to change that pattern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is, my name is Gary A. Brown. I live at 18802 Kiwanee Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio, 44119. And ladies and gentlemen, officers and council, I came here today just to speak as an advocate for skaters and for the Playmore. Of course, I heard about the incident. I'm there skating two or three times per week. I've heard talk tonight of the rink being an unsafe place, or I think, and I quote, "We need to have a safe and controlled environment." And I'm there two or three times a week, and it seems really safe to me. Perhaps I'm, you know, I'm mistaken, but I haven't seen any of you there. You're more than welcome to come to see. I'm serious, to see that it's, it's not an unsafe place, it's a nice place. Obviously, there have been, you know, this event we had the other night, we had things happen. I see officers drive through. I think my motorcycle is safe, my cars are safe when I'm there, because I see officers driving the lot and things like that. But I just want to stress that we need this skating rink, we need this location. And when I heard that it was in jeopardy of being closed down and labeled a nuisance, I said, "This place is not a nuisance." Maybe I'm seeing the wrong thing, and I'm hoping that we can come to some type of agreement or something where we can keep, keep the rink open. And I know you're going to talk with Mr. Sanders, you guys will talk with Mr. Sanders very soon, so we look forward to that and hope that, you know, all of you can get out. I'll be at the event at Tizano's. I'll definitely be there because I want to see that we, we bring our community together. And we have a problem. We really have a problem between the races, between, you know, with police and all this tension. And we have to talk about this, just put it out there and come together. Black people are hurting, a lot of people are hurting, and we need to just admit this. It's not a matter of blaming anybody, nobody should feel defensive, but we have to just talk about this. And that's what a lot of this whole event we saw the other night, that's what's underlying all of this. But at any rate, I just wanted to say that I feel this place is safe. I think a lot of people here will agree with me. Events that happen overnight, as far as I know, I'm not there every single day for every single event, but those are adult events usually. And normally, the crowds are 21, 25, something like that, and over. And this other event, that's not a normal thing for teenagers to be in there all night. But it's a safe place, we need to keep this venue open, and whatever may have happened, if Mr. Sanders did some things that weren't in compliance, this is an opportunity for us to learn. And Mr. Sanders can, you know, well, anyway, at any rate, it's an opportunity for us to keep a business open, keep people coming in the city. I live, although I'm only a few blocks away from Euclid, the Home Depot, as you know, is right at the corner of my street. I'm there in Euclid, spending tons of money in Euclid. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, of the council, mayor, both chiefs, how are you this evening? My name is Lisa Allen. My address is 1330 Dover, Ohio, Dover Avenue, Akron, Ohio. So yeah, I came a long way for this because I'm very passionate. Again, like the gentleman that just spoke, Gary, I speak passionate for our skaters because of the incident that happened. You know, I'm sure things have happened before. You cannot judge a whole community of skaters off of a few incidents. You should be fair to us all. I mean, I myself, just like Mr. Perdue, I promote events at the rink. Usually, my events is 21 to 25 and older. I have a skating competition along with a couple of partners in here that's coming up pretty soon, and I invite each and every one of you guys, you can come as my guest, so you can see what happens at these events. I wish that you would have spoken to the young lady that was giving the party on Friday because that was supposed to be deemed for 18 and over, and usually that's what we usually do, it's 18 and over. And usually, we don't hire security because we're mature enough that we do police ourselves. And I have been giving events at the Playmore, oh my God, for over 15 years with the current and previous owners. And again, not one time had I had to call you guys to come out to our events. Again, they're older, but as a promoter, as the people in the skating community, we do set a tone for this. I mean, I think this was an unfortunate incident. Myself, I'm really getting sick and tired of us having the divide between the black community and the police. I think that we all need to have that conversation. A lot of us is willing to sit down and have that conversation to voice our concerns on how, when you guys come to us, how you approach us as opposed to not come with, you know, ammunition drawn or, or come out with a certain mental approach when you're approaching children of African-American descent. I just want to have that conversation with you guys, so the next time an incident takes place like this, it will be approached differently, and there wouldn't be no, any, there wouldn't be any implicit biases on the situation. I'm not saying that you, as an individual, personally felt that way, but we have to have the conversation that there are some people across the genre that don't quite feel the way you do. It's just what it is. And I will definitely be at the meeting. I'm glad that you guys are opening the floor for us to come and discuss our concerns. I think that with that being said, again, like the gentleman said before me, I wish you guys would withdraw the nuisance complaint because, again, a lot of us has been skating there for years. Again, I'm from Akron, I skate all over. A lot of these faces are familiar, and this is something that is needed in the community because definitely we don't want to see our youths just out and not having anything to do. So if you guys are willing to work with us, we are willing to work with you guys in order to get this in place, so this incident won't happen again, or if it do, we'll find a different approach in order to have our children to have a safe place. And I believe the Playmore is a safe place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Council, oh, South Council President. Very quickly, ma'am, we are, let us get through with our meeting with, our meetings with Mr. Sanders. But I am more than willing to, I don't, not to get in contact with you, and we could meet at the Playmore, if that becomes, I'll have, we will have officers so that you can voice these concerns with officers, not, not me, but real officers. So, I mean, I could be there too. But, but no, people, everybody sees me as the chief, and they want, what they really want is, I want to see one of the, one of the real, one of the police that does the job. Trust me, I did it for 24 years, but in my capacity, no, I'm not generally the one who's responding to calls and handling those calls. I'm still very capable of doing it. But, but to have those officers, you know, the rank-and-file officers, I understand what you're saying, and we would be willing to do that. Okay.
Hi, my name is Julia Smith. My address is 113 Dover Avenue, Akron, Ohio. That is my daughter. And I have been skating for 50 years. And we come to Playmore, I come to Playmore every Thursday and on special event, I am an event promoter. And I would hate to see Playmore be going through the scrutiny that they are going through now, this, this incident that happened. Hopefully, Miguel will be able to redirect a lot of what has gone on with these kids because my skate, my promotion, my promotion is from 21 to older, you know? And we skate like from 12 at night to maybe 4:00 in the morning, and we've never had an incident, none. We've never had no policemen's or anything. So therefore, I'm hoping that you guys will reconsider and work with Miguel to help all of us with the skating community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Sonia Holland. My address is 346 East 222nd Street. And I came here out of the love for my children. I am a Euclid resident, I am a homeowner, and the event of last week was jarring, to say the least. To come here today, and Mayor, I do thank you for the well-written letter. However, inviting us to common ground, to talk about the environment, does not equate to the true problem that's here in Euclid. The problem is the, the treatment of our African-Americans and our African-American children. There is no reason why the children had to be shot with paintballs and all of that. As seasoned veterans, and you know what to do, there are other ways that you could have controlled the crowd. And honestly, and I'm just going to go back a little bit, to invite us to common ground to talk about the environment and not specifically come in here prepared to give us a date to talk about the behavior of our police department is appalling. I was highly offended. It felt like the carrot effect. The carrot is here because you want me to look here, but the problem is over here. So I was really offended by that. My child was actually in the Playmore when the event happened, and I understand that there may have been chaos, chaos outside, but my son was let out in the middle of all of that. Now, the inside of the Playmore was still under capacity, so I don't understand why in your good conscience that you thought it would be okay to release children in the middle of that. I really have a problem with that. You say that you're here to protect us. You said that you were doing what you needed to do in the best interest of our children, but that right there was not in our best interest. I also want to bring to your attention that having children in a skating rink is no different from going to the YMCA when they have their lock-ins. The other gentleman said that there was a lock-in at the North Homestead Mall. Children are children, and they were in a controlled environment, although it was not something that the chief may have approved of. However, it was a controlled environment. It's not uncommon. And I don't think that public officials, police, police chiefs should have a right to tell business owners when and where they should business owners when and where they should have services and for whom, that they would deem safe. We pay taxes. Euclid, we have one of the highest taxes in Cuyahoga County. Why we don't have a recreation center, I don't know. Because we just approved all of these new equipment, and this and that, and this and that. Well, what about our children? Because we pay our taxes, and it's important that our children have some place to be, so they can feel safe. The true problem here is the treatment and the behavior of our police department. And I accept your invitation to sit down and have a talk, but I don't want a one-on-one conversation. I want you to have a open forum, invite everybody, put it on social media, so that your residents can come and be part of the conversation. Now, you're, what is it, clinic for?
Expungement.
No, the one that's coming up with the legal aid. I went to your face, expungement. I went to your Facebook page, and it's not posted there. So that, no, don't. That's something that you want to let your residents know. Having it posted inside a police department, in hopes that someone that might come in to benefit from it, is not really informing your residents. That's all I really have to say. I came here, Chief, I'm going to just tell you, I've been watching you, your eye movements, your head movements, you're going to the mic to ready to speak while people are speaking, and that's a clear indicator that you are not actively listening. So I really don't want you to respond to me. I would like the mayor to respond. Let us know when it's a good time, because you have passionate people here, and the real problem is your police department.[715.32][715.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, I think, Ms. Holland, thank you for being here and sharing your passion. I appreciate that. The expungement clinic, I know, is on the city's website, thecityofeuclid.com on our front page, and I know it's been shared through our City of Euclid website. It is a program being put on by the court, so I don't know if the court has put it out. But I'm happy to, and to the previous woman as well, let, if you guys would like to host something over at Playmore, I'm happy to come, and we can have that conversation, if we want to do a series of them. The conversation, the Cleveland Foundation conversation, I just, that's one opportunity that was already scheduled, and so that is certainly not meant to be a carrot. It's something that's happening. And their conversation is environment, what we're calling it is we're all in this race together, because we realize and understand that we have work to do. I'm committed to doing that work. Our community will be stronger if we all can come together and build that common bond. I think it's here. I know my perspective, I want to hear your perspective, and we want your involvement. Part of the solution with Playmore could be that all of you who are so passionate about roller skating, let's get extra adults there when the kids are there, so that there's more people to help keep things. It's not about the facility and the facility being unsafe, it's about the activity, it's about the behavior that happened that night and in previous incidents that caused problems in the community. It's behavior. It's not the kids that are bad, it's the behavior that we want to change. And so I look forward to having that conversation. Whether it's one-on-one for people who want to do it that way, if it's in smaller groups, I find a larger group, it gets harder to have true, real conversations that we all can learn from, however many it takes. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Shelby Clay. Address is 6505 Bridgewood Avenue in Parma. I got a really bad spot in line, because everybody went ahead of me and said everything that I was going to say.[860.61][860.61](LAUGHTER).
What was nice hearing from you.
By shorthand, could, could we just get a shorthand of everybody in the skate community that came out tonight? That's a lot of people that care about this issue.
And we're glad you're all here.
Myself personally, I don't want to get up here and, you know, fight back and forth or point fingers or bring any hostility, but I do want to say that we came to your house. We're here to speak, we're here to listen, we're inviting you to ours. And I want to say it again, a few people said it already, we are inviting you out, because I think there's a disconnect between, and it's not just you guys, we get it with, in our social circles all the time. What we do in the rinks versus people who don't come to the rinks, there's really not an understanding of what's going on. There is an adult session tomorrow night, people, let's come. They're laughing, I'm dead serious, I'll meet you at the door, I'll pay your fare, I'll teach you how to skate, like, I'm a leader of a skate group.
Will you pay my mortgage when I fall down and get hurt?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Will you pay my mortgage payment when I fall down and get hurt?
I don't know, no, no, no. I just started a new job, I can't get you on that yet. I am, and all of us are, we are 100% heartfelt in inviting you out to meet the people you are impacting with this conversation. We really want you to meet the people who you are impacting with the decisions that you are making, in reference to that building. Because the disconnect is, and I've heard it said a couple of times from that side, forgive me for not remembering who it was, that you need a permit whenever you're doing something that doesn't involve skating, or when you go beyond skating. Nothing in that building goes beyond skating. Everything we do in there is skating, it's a skating rink. I mean, we take it seriously to the point that you don't mess up our floor, right? If you go walking on our floor in high heels or something, you're going to get yelled at. If you, if you go out on the floor carrying a slushie or a drink, somebody's going to give you a dirty look. It's a culture for us. And, and we understand that there is a disconnect. We don't want that disconnect there, because we want to be heard, we want to be understood. So, we don't want this conversation to be one-sided, in the sense that we are constantly being guided and chided on how to be a productive community. We also want to factually know that we are being heard when we give suggestions for you guys to be a more productive governing body. So again, there is an adult session tomorrow night, and I will be there.
What time?
What is it, eight, eight to 11? There we go, eight to 11. And I'm not going to ask any specific questions about permits or paperwork or legal documentation. The only question I want to ask everybody, and I'll wait for a response, are you going to be there tomorrow? Thank you.[1020.36][1020.36](APPLAUSE).
Madam Counsel President, can you call the road?
As long as you're willing to pick up the cost of the emergency room visit when you see us off.
I will, I will be there.
Thank you so much.
I will.
The mayor said she'll be there.
I will pay my own way, though.
Yeah.[1050.36][1050.36](APPLAUSE). Next speaker, please.
Sir?
Sir?
Sorry, I don't want to, I don't know, I forgot his name. I'll talk and make sure that we have folks available, they may not be able to skate, but if we have officers available that want to stop in, and what, that's tomorrow from?
Eight to 11.
Eight to 11. All right, thank you.
And then Thursday, we got time, so tomorrow is a work for you, Thursday. That's what I was just getting ready to say.
I've got my kids sports every night.
Okay, let's continue. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Quindalyn Alexander. I stay at 16214 Friend Avenue in Maple Heights, Ohio, 44137. And I'm here because I would like to voice my opinion, because I have loved ones that have come skating. And I'm definitely a skater, and I support the rink. And I just want you guys to understand the importance of leaving that rink open. Such as what Shelby just said, everybody really took what I was going to say. But feel free to come out and visit tomorrow, eight to 11, as well as Thursday, nine to one. And I'm quite sure you can get a different view on what we call our home, as far as fun and activity. Everybody don't smoke and drink to get relaxed, because I'm not one of those people. I like to roller skate. So, it's only two rinks that's close, and that's the USA and the Playmore. And I prefer the Playmore, so, because it's more about 40 and over. I know I might look young, but I'm an old girl, okay? So, leave it open.
Thanks, thank you.[1168.65][1168.65](APPLAUSE). The forum, please. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Hudson. I live at 262 East 257th Street, Euclid. And I think I want to start off by saying, I was very offended, and unfortunately not very surprised, that children were pepper sprayed. And there was nothing saying that the children were attacking the police, and they felt like their safety was, you know, and so they had to do something horrendous like that. So I just wanted to say that I find that disgusting. The other thing that I want to say is, I have no doubt that had the police not went outside and told some of the kids that some of you are not going to get in, that there would have been, there would not have been a fight. I don't think there would have been any fighting, or altercations, pushing, and that didn't warrant them being pepper sprayed, or harassed by grown people, and in a threatening way. But I'm just saying, I do believe that all of those kids could have just went into the rink and had a wonderful time. And there were also parents in there, along with other adults to help supervise. I've been skating for almost 30 years. I love roller skating. I actually get offended when people ask me, do I, what is it, roller derby? I'm like, no, do I look like I do that? What I do is I leave my everyday, and I disappear into this world on wood with eight wheels, and I have a marvelous time with people who feel the same way I do.[1284.65][1284.65](APPLAUSE). It's not just an escape, it's a livelihood. A lot of us do this at least twice a week. And we also participate in the other skate events. Skate events that don't even happen here, they happen in different cities, different states, they're international skate events. So I just want to say that I was very disappointed, and I was just wondering, I hate to say stuff like this, but who is actually policing the police? Who is making them accountable? Is anything going to be done? Because I know people are going to go after Miguel in the Playmore, and say, well, you need to do A through Z. You need to do them right, and you need to do them right now. But I'm not hearing anything, hearing anything stating that the police need to be responsible for their actions. At least, I'm sorry, you know, the president likes to say, make, won't tell them, you have to say you're sorry. Well, an apology might work a little bit, something to show that you show some remorse. Otherwise, it just feels like they're getting away with doing something that was disgusting. It wasn't safe. They incited that. And I'm sure they would not have wanted it to happen to their children, because they have children too, I've heard that tonight. So aside from saying all that, I am part of the roller skating family, which is international. And it's a lovely forum, it's healthy, it's healthy social. We, we get married in skating. We have kids in skating. I skate with people who have three generations at the rink at the same time. And when Miguel bought this rink less, just a month short of a year ago, we thought we wouldn't have our place, you know, we were going to have to go to another place. But when he bought it, it was like he just saved our lives for some reason. And we were able to take another second breath and breathe, and we were hugging, and we were crying, and laughing, and texting, and calling, and it's really, truly a family. And so I think what I want is, my question would be, is that, how can we come together, be more transparent, and let Miguel know what he needs to do before the fact? So that he can go ahead and do that. I don't think he has a problem with doing what needs to be done. He bought a rink. That's enough said there, so have a great evening, I'm done.
Thank you.[1441.15][1441.15](APPLAUSE). Next speaker, please.
Rose M. Allen, 26241 Lakeshore Boulevard. And I'm not here to discuss the incident at the skating rink. We have enough people who've had their comments. But there are a couple of things that come to mind with me. I'm old-fashioned. I don't believe children should be out playing basketball at midnight, or anything else at midnight. I believe they should be home with parents. If you're under 18, you're still considered a child. And I know they have these programs, midnight basketball, midnight this. I don't think children should be out after midnight, or even until midnight, because I haven't seen anything good come out of children being out that late. And people have said, well, the parents aren't home. Well, if the parents aren't home, and they have children out in the streets, then arrest the parents for child neglect. This is not acceptable, in terms of how this world is going, not just the city of Euclid. But when children are out doing whatever they want to do, at whatever time they want to do it, we have a problem with the way society is going. And this is not about the skating rink, this is just about children in general. The other comment that I have, which is taking away from the reason I came tonight, goes to policing. And I have always been a supporter of law enforcement, and I believe in legal law enforcement. One of the things that I have observed, though, is if the persons who are dedicated to serve and protect, if they fear the people they are supposed to serve and protect, or have some disdain for the people they are supposed to serve and protect, perhaps they need some more training, or they need a new job.[1562.53][1562.53](APPLAUSE). Now, on to the reason I came. This city is trying to improve. I know the walkway along the lake is a big thing that's supposed to attract people to Euclid. But with incidents like what has happened, you know, it's going to be hard for some people to open their minds to come and take a walk on the lake. I have my opinion about the walk on the lake, because there's nowhere to go, other than walk along the lake. And I don't feel that people are going to come stampeding in the Euclid just to walk on the lake. I have previously said, we need a restaurant or some type of entertainment center on the lake. I have brought up Pier W. out in Lakewood, that is, that attracts people. They come from all over to be able to sit and watch a sunset on the lake, while eating a decent meal. If we don't go in that direction, I don't think we're going to have that much of a bright future in Euclid. The other thing, I know there was a meeting about erosion, and now people are getting all, are concerned about erosion. And you can say, here she goes again, but I'm going to say it, in 1981, I ran for council, and one of the concerns I had, 38 years ago, was erosion. And I'm just curious, is the city going to take 38 years to act on the problems in the city? Is it going to be another 38 years? Because even if my good health, I don't think I'll be around 38 more years. I would like to see some vision in this city, deal with the issues, before they become the problems. And I don't see that happening. So I'd like to see people develop a vision, and stop believing that Euclid is the end all of everything, because it's not. Has anybody on council ever lived any place outside of the state of Ohio? Hands. One. There are other things that are great, that are outside of the city of Euclid, and outside of Cuyahoga County, and outside of the state of Ohio. I have lived enough states to see those things. So I suggest maybe people start traveling, and visiting, and seeing what can be, instead of saying, if it doesn't, if it doesn't exist in Euclid, it can't exist. I'm tired of hearing that. Now, a couple of things. Are there any codes regarding what happens after an earthquake, regarding high rises? Don't answer now, you can answer later. Other thing, for those of you who responded to my email about CAFCO, I appreciate those who responded, and I would still like people to pay attention, CAFCO is similar to asbestos, and it can do the same kind of damage. So there are concerns about people's health. Buildings can be rebuilt, but people's lives cannot be restored, if they lose health or die of cancer. So I'd like something to address that whole issue.
Ms. Allen.
And that's my time is up, and I'll say goodnight and thank you.
Thank you.[1759.26][1759.26](APPLAUSE). Next speaker, please.
Yes, hello, my name is Jeremiah Banks, 21860 Roberts Avenue, and I'm here because I would like to talk about the Playmore Roll Rink. Ever since I was three years old, I never knew how to skate, and I always wanted to do something fun, because my mom told me, if you go do something fun, and learn how to do something, talent will lead you a long way in life. So once I turned three and I learned how to skate, skating took me so far in life, that it kept me out of streets and kept me out of trouble. that it kept me out of streets and kept me out of trouble. And when my mom told me that when I turned sixteen, I am dearly hurt and sick with epilepsy seizure, and that's something that stopped me from skating for a while. But once, I, my mom, my dad told me, don't never stop what you're doing, always try to achieve in life and do things, that led me far to start skating again. Even though I have epilepsy seizure, I still skate because it always keeps me in trouble, out of trouble, and it stays me away from the street or any pain I can get into. And I just would not like to see a roller rink that kept me out of trouble for so many years and kept me going in life to stop. And I would not like to see a roller skating rink that I am so good and talented, ever since I couldn't even stand up for two seconds on skating rinks, and now I can spin for two minutes straight. I would not like to see a roller rink that I am good at that has kept me out of trouble, gone, and now it's me. Jeremiah Banks.
Speaker, please.
My name is Maurice Cook, Hollywood Dazzler. I have been professionally skating since nineteen sixty, all across this country. I've been into movies, television, and everything else. Could name a lot of stuff, but it don't mean, mean nothing. The thing here is that this is not just happening in this city here. I'll be eighty this, this July. I used to come out here to Euclid Beach years ago, and I watched them skate in the rings, which we weren't allowed to go into. Also, it's been a lot of stuff going on in this, in this little small city. A lot of people may not like it, and they may not like, like what I'm bringing it up, but this is nothing really new. It's been going on quite a while. I don't have to tell you about it, you know. But the thing is, we have a, a situation here where this place, what we're talking about this day, the Playmore, which I originally started at the Playmore in Cleveland years and years ago. I started out when I was about eight years old. I'll be eighty this, this July first. Skating is really something nice. It's taken me all across the country, all over the place. I've been skating, like I said, professionally in movies and everything else, nightclubs, the whole bit. I have had problems. Prejudice is a very bad thing. It hasn't been mentioned tonight, but we know that's what it's all about. And it's a situation where we all have to really get on and just buckle down and be for real about it. I mean, you probably skated when you were younger, or whatever your problem was and everything else. People come up and talk about, well, we don't want you to do this, we don't want you to do this, and everything else. A lot of times, they have thoughts of not really putting it where it should be. And I think that the whole thing is, you know, the skating situation which brought me out here tonight, is because I had a lot of friends, a lot of people, not only here, not only in this Playmore, all across the country. I have skated for people that you wouldn't believe. I've skated for a lot of councilmen, a lot of everything. I've been in places that you wouldn't believe as far as roller skating go. You wouldn't even think skating go there. I didn't know until I was into it. The things that we are talking about is something, because it might be another Maurice Cook coming along in this roller rink, or another roller rink and everything, but be fortunate enough to make the money that I've been able to make. I've been paid forty-seven thousand dollars just to roller skate. Think about that. I didn't have to go to college or nothing to try to learn how to do this, I just picked it up at the roller rink like everybody else. But it's a thing, you know, it's a, it's a nice thing. I have skated for every nationality, old, middle-aged, young, and like. I've even skated at places where kids couldn't even get up out the, out the cribs to holler at me. I've skated in hospitals. One of the main hospitals I went to was in, here in Cleveland, tuberculosis. And I skated all around there, and I was picking these kids up, and I was doing dances with them, and I was kissing them and everything, and everybody, aren't you afraid you're going to catch? No, I already had it. When I was young, my mother had a house, she had the house, and she, she loaned it out, you know, rented it out and everything. Guy come to us and got a room because he didn't want to give his kids the tuberculosis. But he made friends with me, my mother almost shot him. But fortunately for him, he got away. But the fact is, is that God, I believe, takes care of us all. He gave me a talent that was unbelievable, and I try to use it to the best of my ability to help everybody that I possibly can. Chief, I've skated for guys like you, yours, and all of them. I've been in places where I've been, you cannot believe the kind of places that I have skated in. You would not believe it. Raising money and everything else. Because, see, we are, you know, we out there, we're all human beings, we're trying to do our thing, trying to make it the best way we can. This kind of situation here going on now about the Playmore is really, really upsetting me because of the fact that I am a skater. You can't see it. It's not a promotional, no promotional thing. This is just part of the things that I've done in my roller skating. I know you can't see it all.
Sir, sir, your time is up.
Good enough. But the thing I want to say-
I'm sorry.
No problem. All I got to say is that, let everybody else do what they want to do, because of the fact that we are, you know, sometimes some adults get turned off. They don't want to go on things. Mostly everybody in here has skated at one time or another. Come on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Darryl Moore. I live at 24401 Russell Avenue in Euclid. Is the chief coming back in? I mean, the other guy. He's coming back? Okay, well, I don't skate. I skated one time in my life, and I busted my butt, so I haven't done, that was thirty, thirty-eight years ago, I was nine, nine years old, so, good Lord willing, I'll turn fifty this month. I haven't been on skate since. But that's not what I'm here for. I'm concerned about the bigger issue than what happened last week. I left the South in racism and all the stuff that I had to deal with down there for a better life up here. I've been here since two thousand fourteen. When I was twenty-one, good, graduate back, when I was twenty-one, I was in college, and I went to Tuskegee University, a black college. Auburn University is twenty miles away, and we had to do all our shopping there. And police stopped us because I had a car that didn't, that they did figure I belonged in that area on the edge of campus. They got us out on the ground, guns drawn, kind of like what I've been seeing here in this town. And where's the drugs at? We don't have any, so we're college students. Tore my car apart because I had a box Chevy, big rims, they didn't like it. Didn't even bother to tell me, after they tore my car apart, that they were done, they just got in the car and drove off, left me on the ninety-degree concrete. I vowed that day, I said, nobody will ever put me on the ground like that again. Nobody. I went out that next day and I got a handgun permit, and I got a gun. I said, nobody will do me like that. Time moves on, I got married, I got three kids. I come to the Great North, I think everything is better. Down south, somebody don't like you because of the color of your skin, they tell you. It's not hidden. I've seen crosses burned. I was in an all-black high school, we played at a white school on the north side of town, they burned crosses before you got there. You saw the big flame in the field. I saw that. Fifteen, I saw that. I saw my grandfather die. Tuskegee Experiment. Died at the hospital that was on the campus where I went every day as a college student, and I had to see that hospital every day where my grandfather died. But I left all of that. I got my education, I came north, and I'm here. And I had three sons, and you know what I tell them every day, less than a mile from here? Do not go down a dark street. If you have problems, you call me. Now, mayor, there's ninety-four cops on it, on your force, right? Give or take. I know, I'm, I'm shooting you numbers, but it's, it's four black cops. This town, this town is sixty-four percent, sixty percent black, four, four black cops, zero black firemen. Now, this incident took place last Wednesday. You say, mayor, you want to meet with people. Is it not true that you've already filed a paperwork as of last Friday to have this business shut down? Yes or no? That's all we need.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that means the rest of this stuff about meeting is just smoking mirrors to make the people feel good. If you've, if the decision, if the decision has already been made, this is just a song and dance. Now, either you can hear us now, all of you, or you can hear us in November when we pass our ballots. You got a choice. You can get this right now, or you, we can get you right in November. Because, yeah, there's been voter apathy, and that's how a lot of you have been getting reelected. But with sixty percent of the people looking like us now, and if you keep mistreating us, your day is coming. And I promise you that. If I have to wear my shoes out, your day is coming. You're going to do right, or you're going to get out. Now, I'm not some, I'm not some thug, I'm not some gangster, I'm a father, I'm, I'm an older man now, and I ride around my, in these streets, officer, I want to let you know one thing. I ride around with a handgun and a, a handgun permit, I'm registered, and I'm going to tell you why. Not because I'm worried about somebody, one of these citizens or one of these thugs bothering, I have a gun to protect me from dirty cops. That's why I carry a gun, because-
Sir, sir, your time is up.
That's the truth. Thank you. Think about that.
Thank you. One moment, sir.
Hello. I, I just want to say one thing. The law director did file the paperwork on Friday, I believe.
That is correct.
Friday, but that does not mean we always have the ability to withdraw it, correct?
That is correct.
And so the-
Make your head!
Goal, the goal is, as I said, the goal is to work something out.
Did you have to pay to file that?
Uh, I don't know, did we pay to file?
We did not.
No.
No.
Hello, I'm Dominique Campbell. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio, and I'm Freedom Fighter 216. I went to the Art Institute of Pittsburgh, so I'm a graphic design artist, and I believe in freedom of expression. I have recently have been on, it's a Euclid, Ohio page on Facebook, where you're saying it's sixty percent black, I don't like to call people black, but Aboriginals that stay on the land of Euclid, Ohio. It's sixty percent Aboriginals that stay on that land, or black people, as you may call them. And they are now, if you go on the Facebook page, it's people that post onto the Euclid, Ohio's Facebook page, and there's a lot of people that make prejudiced comments, like the man has stated back here. This, it was good to actually see you up here because I was bitten by a police dog in Euclid using a police dog to conduct a crowd control several years ago. And this dog was used to conduct a crowd control, and the dog, I had spotted an officer lose control of his dog. I couldn't articulate myself in court, so now I stand in front of people, able to articulate myself because I was a high school dropout. Euclid, Ohio allowed a dog in court. I sat in court, and because I was scared to tell people I was a high school dropout, that's what, that's what made me weak, you know? So I went to court and tried to explain to them how this dog, how this guy was in trouble for beating his woman or something. So he couldn't explain to them that he was bitten on his buttocks. And the police officer, when I yelled out to him, hey, to, not to the police officer, to the young black man that was getting bit by the dog on the buttocks, I yelled out to him, hey, I have everything on record. Don't worry about it, it's okay. The officer then turned his dog to me and allowed his dog to chase me on top of my car that I couldn't get in because my friend had already jumped into my car. So, um, Euclid officers, that, that's neither here or there. Euclid officers then were allowed to get my camera, and with this camera that they had obtained, they were able to say that I only had two separate footages. So now you're saying this situation, this situation happens in a crowd, a crowd-controlled area where the officers are doing whatever they're doing with these children that, basically, these children were standing outside and the officers came out there and made an announcement, which wasn't their place, you know? So, um, basically, now you've pepper sprayed these children, you're doing whatever that you want to do, your Facebook group, if anybody goes on that Facebook group right now, I guarantee you that it's a lot of people make racist comments that have been living in Euclid for years. So it's not a thing, it's not always about race, because there are some great cops that work for Euclid, Ohio. It is good cops that work for Euclid, Ohio. I'm, I'm, I'm not here to stand up for the good cops, because they know who they are. It's cops that have taken pictures with me that, when I say what I say concerning the police. So what I'm saying, it is some dirty cops, or whatever words you can find is better than dirty. It's cops that feel that they can do whatever they want to do, and I am a private security guard of the state. When I had got arrested by that police officer, you hear me, I got arrested by the police officer, several cops said, what do you want to do with him? He said, grab his ass. I want him, because I had obtained this officer losing control of his dog and biting a guy on the buttocks. So when it comes to all these people saying this stuff, they're talking about the roller skate, the roller rink, but the real problem is the officers and then people of, not just the officers, but people in the community that entice these officers to keep doing it, like, yeah, get their asses. That's, that's really going on in this city, you know? And when I ride through this city, why should I be scared? I'm from Cleveland, Ohio. People run up and got guns all the time. Why should I be scared when I go through what, Euclid is supposed to be a suburb? Why should I, why should I be scared? Nobody can answer that, you know? It, it, it should not be like that. My time is not up, but I'm going to say that the officers, like I tell officers as a private security guard, because the private security guard that was there to help me at the bar that night as a photographer and a videographer, didn't help me in court, besides, he stuttered the whole time because he knew the officer was wrong. But because security guards have to kiss the butts of officers, because like that officer said-
Sir.
-security and officers are two separate entities.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Derek Sanders. I'm the son of Miguel Sanders, and also one of the, the hosts of the event that occurred on June 12th for all high school students to come out and celebrate the end of the school year and the beginning of the summer. I feel very entitled to show myself, just remorse on this whole situation. Honestly, this whole situation was under control, but starting with two Euclid police officers that were hired to show up at nine o'clock on June 12th, they didn't show up. I feel that was very irresponsible on Euclid's police department, and that is something that should be confronted. And also, I feel that the occurrence of this whole, the, I feel, June 12th, I feel like that, that was the day that high school students came out, they, it should have been a fun night, it should have been a complete night, but, you know, things happen, and things happen for a reason. So, you know, the, the crowd that was inside, I feel we had them under control, although the crowd outside, I feel that, that was- Although the crowd outside, I feel that, that was the police, I feel like the police made the whole situation worse when they started pepper spraying and shooting kids with paintball guns filled with mace or whatever the new invention is. But I feel it was just very wrong. And also that the whole crowd inside was affected by this mace that was sprayed outside of the front door, which traveled through the whole building, affecting all children inside under the age of eighteen. I feel it's wrong. And I feel that as a community, we, we need to step up. And also, my, my dad, I, I feel that he has guidelines that he, he needs to follow, and that those things can be brought up in situations, then he can grow as an entrepreneur at Mix Play More to build his craft, his business, and everything he needs to build up to keep everything running. I, I feel like he is a man to work with, and he is a man that listens and respects other people. And I, and when he, he bought this roller skating rink, it, it really motivated me.
It really. You know, we're all just trying to have fun. You know, there's things that we must follow, there's rules and regulations. And I feel like as a community, we can come together and really work together with each other, build each other, and help each other out as a community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My time's up. Um, hi, my name is Maxwell White, I'm from the East Cleveland area. I've, I've been skating for like a very like, I'm not gonna say a long time, but like for a while. And then I gave up on it, because me and my sister and my mom moved to like a different area where there wasn't really a skating rink anywhere. Then I graduated high school and I moved to the East Cleveland area. And I was at Play More before, it was called Mix Play More, skating there for a while. And then it got closed down, unfortunately. And then I found out it reopened back up. So I was always there ever since. I bought my first pair of real skates ever since I was like twenty years old. And I've been skating there ever since. It's like, it's, I'm sorry, y'all, I just got off of work, but it's difficult for me to say this, but I want y'all to look at me as like an example of a kid of like, like what my life could be like without skating. Because it's like, I don't want this, I need this, you know? Young, young kids like me, you, you see, they, they doing a lot of stuff. That, that could be me. I could be doing all the wrong things, I could be a kid coming into a police station, not even here or anywhere, you know, for doing all the wrong drama. But rather than do that, I wanted to find something productive that I already knew I could do, that I can get better at. I'm, I'm at Play More every Tuesday night, every Friday night, Saturdays from two to eight. And I could be doing anything, but I would rather be there. I help, I help clean up the rink at night. At that, at that Wednesday event, it was, well, it was like a lot of trash, so many skates. I was in there, I was inhaling all that. I helped clean it up at the end of the night, because I, I love that place. I, I love it so much. I just, I mean, that's, that's all I want to say, you know? Like, don't, like, don't close it down, don't, don't ruin it for like the people who come out there on a positive note, you know? People on a negative note, you can't, you can't tell them what to do or handle themselves, because they're just gonna do what they do and what they learned and what they was taught naturally. Me, I was just taught other things, and I, I need this. So, um, so please, please don't, please don't ruin this for, for me and people who like, who love this, who like to do this. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. And due to the lateness of the hour, our last speaker will be the gentleman in the white t-shirt. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Miguel Sanders. Twenty-two zero zero six Howard, Euclid, Ohio. I am the owner of Mix Play More. It's a rough time getting here this evening, but it's good to be here. As you see, many skaters, supporters of Mix Play More of roller skating have came out tonight, because this is something they feel very passionate about, as I. I raise my fists, because united, we skate.
Sir?
United.
Address the Council and Administration.
We skate. It's a logo on a t-shirt. What happened on June 12th, 2019, is probably a day I will never forget. You know, I am a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I have two dads who are retired police officers. I am a graduate of Case Western Reserve University. I am an entrepreneur, trying to make it. Trying to raise children. I have been working in the field with children for the past twenty-five years. I've worked in the detention center, foster care. I've worked with pre-college programs. Kids is what I do. I'm an expert in that field. What happened was wrong. All of you guys sitting up at these tables are very smart people. That's why you're there. We don't have to go back and forth about what is the lie and what is the truth. People set a tone. When I met the law director, she called me in for a meeting. One of the first things she says was, "We're gonna shut your rink down as a public nuisance if you don't do right." She set a tone. She also mentioned something that stuck with me. She talked about me going to jail. Hasn't happened yet. I don't appreciate it. And I'm gonna just say it formally now. It set a tone. What happened on June 12th, you know, with the permit to police officers, everybody knows what the truth is. I have emails, I paid my one hundred dollars for a permit. I've had contact with a police officer who was my regular contact when I got police, Euclid police, to work at the rink. It's in writing, technology has it all. Nonetheless, at the end of the day, we didn't get police officers to help us to secure the place. I had no idea that many kids were coming out. It's always my hope that a lot of kids, a lot of people will come and visit our business and have fun there. But I do feel much more secure when Euclid police officers are present, because I count on them and their expertise to help secure the place, to keep everybody safe, and to do what needs to be done. Spraying kids with all this mace inhalants, that sort of stuff, I don't know where they teach that at. I've done a little research. I've seen there's been lawsuits related to torture and, and police spraying, pepper spray, those sorts of things. From all indications, there were two females fighting. After the count.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay. After the count and all that stuff. So I'll finish, we all know the story. I'm a community partner. I'm willing to work with any and everybody to make the city of Euclid better and to help kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcus Epps, 255-80, Tungsten Road. I want to start by, a little background about my experience with the rink. I, for lack of better words, that rink and the bowling alley in Wickliffe, I grew up in these facilities. That rink has been a staple in our community for years. And you, there were long lines, people say it all the time, there were never lines of kids outside that facility, that is not true. There were long lines of kids, I used to work there. And in fact, when folks tell you if you walk out on the floor with a slushy, they're upset about it, that's a fact. My job was to be that bad guy, to tell my friends, in many cases, you can't walk out on the floor with that slushy. But there were long lines of kids always out there. And some people take two different routes. Either one, you show up early to try to avoid the line, or you show up late to try to avoid the line. And as a result of that, in this particular instance, I was dropping off my kid, I showed up late to avoid the line, to avoid the commotion, we've seen that stuff happen. But when I was growing up there, there were, it was a line. And Euclid police officers, the role of Euclid police officers was to control that line. They stood there, folks knew if you weren't in that line, you were not gonna get inside the rink. And so officers were there, or employees of the rink were there to make sure that it was an orderly line. And sometime that line wrapped the entire east side of that building as well. That's how many people would be out there, in line early, getting dropped off early. Parents waited, other parents didn't, but you knew you were gonna get inside, because Keith ran a very, ran a very tight shift. I think that, and I express this when my conversations with Mr. Sanders, the owner of that property as well, who is willing to and wants to be a community partner. You can see that from certain actions that he took prior to this particular event, okay? And in my conversations with him, I expressed that to him as well. Somebody, even if an officer is not there, on behalf of the facility, should be outside controlling that line. Officers, when they arrived on this scene, I got there about nine-twenty to take my son. Obviously, officers walking around with what looked like assault rifles, gas masks on. They never at any point tried to approach these children to engage the kids, to say, hey, 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 you better get in a line, none of that ever happened. They showed up, they walked around these kids with what appeared to be assault rifles, as opposed to trying to engage them in a positive manner. There was no one fighting in that crowd at all, at all. There was no one disrespecting officers at all. And the idea that our young people, which you know, everyone in here knows, there's very little for them to do in our community, you know that. This is a growing problem, not just here in Euclid, though it's everywhere, it's a problem. But the idea that they can't show up to a place that has been a staple in this suburb for twenty-plus years, and just speaking from my ears, I believe it's even been longer than that. But the idea that they can't show up, and parents can't with positive expectation that dropping their kids off to this facility where there are security guards, where there are employees of this facility, adults who run this facility, the idea that parents have to go in, or should be going in to accompany those children inside at a place where there are adults supervising them, it, it's, it's, it is what is brewing this atmosphere of, or this idea that your reasoning for doing what you do is because they're African-Americans. I know many of you, and, and all of you, and all of you know me well. And I know many of you, and Mayor, in your campaign, you ran on cooperation and gonna be the one to bring people together, you talked about that a lot, a lot. And the idea that on Friday, there were already paper, there was already paperwork filed to shut down a business before you reached out to talk to this business owner, again, about the incident that occurred on Wednesday night, that doesn't sound like partnership, it doesn't sound like cooperation at all. We have got to be clear about one thing that is very, very, very evident in our community, and that is that there are growing racial divides. There are. And that none of us are perfect. We all make mistakes. But what makes a strong leader, Chief, you as well, what makes a strong leader is when you can acknowledge when you are the one who has committed wrongdoing, when you've done wrong. You've got to be able, you've, you've got to be able to admit when you're wrong. And in this particular instance, I was there. And I know the officer who made those statements to me did not know who I was when he made those statements. But I simply walked up, what's going on here? You know, what, what is all this, what's going on, right?
Mr. Epps, Mr. Epps, your time is up.
And at that point, he made comments he should not have. In the spirit of cooperation, they should not call a meeting or put something together for you. You should host something for them.
Sir, you're finished.
Thank you.
Last speaker.
My name is Jamiro McLarty. I live at eleven-eight-seven East one-seventy-second Street, Cleveland, Ohio. I used to live in Euclid. Spent half my, my teenage years in Euclid. Actually, Euclid High School was the funnest high school I ever went to, and I went to plenty. I spent years working downtown and also living downtown. And what I've seen downtown didn't amount to anything that I've seen Wednesday night when I went to pick up my little sister from the rink. I've, I've seen, you know, I've seen where, you know, people fighting, groups of people are fighting and whatnot downtown, you know, and everyone's running, you know, chaos. But I've never seen anything to that level of what I seen on Wednesday. It, you would have thought it was something out of a movie. That situation from top to bottom was mishandled, from top to bottom. That's not how you treat children. That's not how adults treat children. I'm a father. You don't, you don't, you don't talk to kids that way. You don't push them around that way, you don't grab them and drag them out of their hair. That's abuse. That's abuse of power. We're the adults. We're the ones that's supposed to be leading, and this is what they see. And you wonder why they resent us. You wonder why they resent cops. Something needs to be said, someone needs to be held accountable, or someone needs to just come out and say, hey, you know what? We messed up. It needs to be some type of outreach. If this is your community, these are the people that came out, and they came out for this. They look like me. You need to speak up and say something. Because if this rink closes, imagine the backlash is gonna be on y'all. It's not just gonna affect the ballot, it's gonna affect business. Because guess what? How I roll, if I feel like I'm not being treated fairly, guess where my money goes? To someone that's gonna treat me better. Flat out. When I showed up to pick up my little sister, you know what happened to me? I had two different officers approach me and threaten to mace me if I didn't move. I'm standing next to the bench, and I'm like, I'm just here to pick up my little sister. You need to move, sir, you need to move, sir, I'm, you know, they're making threats. Until one officer came up and was like, hey, what are you here for? And I'm like, I'm, just like I told the other officer, I'm just here to pick up my little sister. He's like, alright, you're fine. And the other officer that, that was in my face, he pushed him away. Do you understand, do you understand like what that does to someone psychologically? I'm an adult, I'm a parent, I'm here to pick up my little sister. And amidst all this, all I see is chaos. The streets are packed with police cars, sheriffs, Euclid. I, I walk up, and on both sides of the door, you see cops, they got their arm, they got their, their, their tear gas guns or whatever, they got masks on or whatnot, they're shouting at you. Kids are all in the day's parking lot, puking everywhere because they've been sprayed. You got kids that are like, hey, my parents told me to stand right here because they're gonna come pick me up, but you're yelling at them telling them that they can't. But you're yelling at them telling them that they can't stand right there, but they don't know where to go. They're kids. They're kids. I'm a parent and this is what I'm seeing. So then next thing you know, all the kids come outside, right? The kids that are in the rink, that you, that you guys may, may come out. And the first thing that they see is lights and sirens everywhere, cop cars everywhere, all these blinding lights when they come out the rink. This first thing is the blinding lights. And you see both sides of the rink lined with officers with masks on, yelling and shouting at them, telling them that they need to go. And they're like, "My parents says they're gonna pick me up. You need to go, you need to go, I'm gonna spray." You know, they're, they're getting threatened. This is the first thing that they see. What, what happened? Like, what happened? Like, what happened? Are you ready for the backlash that you're about to receive for when this permit goes through or, or this, whatever you filed to get the, get the place closed? Are you ready for this? Because that's your seat and it won't be there no more. I promise you. That's all.
Thank you, sir. This is our last speaker, everybody, please.
Good evening. I, um, just got back in town and I wanted to make sure that I came here and had the opportunity to speak before each and every one of you. I was there the day.
Could we have your name and address?
Sure, my name is Dorothy Curtis.
Thank you.
I live in University Heights. I was there the day of the event. I pull up because I was there to help volunteer. I pulled up and I see the kids outside. The first thing I said to Miguel when I talked to him, I said, "Where are the police?" He was like, "I don't know." So to me, that told me, he in his mind, thought that there were gonna be police officer there at nine o'clock or before then to help with the crowd. Of course, he didn't know it was gonna be that many kids out there. Nobody knew that. But even so, you could have still had a patrol car there to deter the kids or the police officers that were supposed to be there or that he thought was supposed to be there, that never showed up. But nonetheless, as the day goes on, he's there at the window servicing these children as they come in orderly. There was no problem with the kids coming in at all. Once they were inside the skating rink skating, there was no problems there either. As a matter of fact, as I was preparing hot dogs for the kids, I thought to myself, "Wow, these kids are really doing it right. They're skating, they're laughing, they're dancing, having a good time on those skates." The next thing I know, I see kids running to the back. I'm like, "What's going on?" I come out the booth, I come out and I can't breathe. I'm like, "What is happening?" Now, I've never been in any area of tear gas or whatever that is that you used that day or the police officers used that day. But it was overwhelming. What did you guys expect for the kids to do? They're gonna run. There's gonna be chaos. And it was. And I'm thinking to myself, these kids were in here doing what they were supposed to do, enjoying themselves, and this is what they get? Further on, I said, "Miguel, what would you like for me to do with these hot dogs?" He was like, "Pass them out to these kids." I pass out the hot dogs to the kids. I just so happened to go outside passing out hot dogs. And what do I see? I am 53 years old and I have never in my life witnessed something like this. As I'm standing there with hot dogs in my hand, I see a police officer with what he had, or it looked like a rifle, running across the street aiming at a child. That's what I witnessed. Now, I don't know about any of you, but I'm sure as heck you wouldn't appreciate seeing something like that. I have never. Yeah, I seen it on TV. I seen it where it was fictional, not facts. This was a fact. I witnessed this myself. And I'm still upset to this day. And as I look and see officers, I'm like, I don't wanna judge every officer over what that officer did. It's not fair, is it? I don't want you to judge a child or all the children that you're judging over a fight over two kids. Is it fair to judge these young African-American students that were coming out to enjoy themselves that night? Is it fair for each of you or any of you, any of us, to judge all of our children? They have enough judgment against them. We should come together as a community. The next day, he gets an email from the law director. Who is the law director, if you don't mind me asking? Oh, she didn't come. How about that? He gets an email from her stating to shut it down? To shut down something that's been in that neighborhood for many, many years? And probably some of you had, may have gone there and skated. If you're not a skater, you may not understand. We have a loving community and it's something we love to do. It brings us together. It's like a kid's playground for adults. We love it. It's freedom, it's enjoyable. And you guys should think about what you're doing to these kids if you were to shut it down. And not only the kids, the adults. It's a place where we go. How about that? People who are educated, have jobs, look like me, look like you, they come out there. Every week, we look forward to that. So it's not just the kids you're affecting, it's adults as well. Yes, I have passion for it, I surely do. And guess what? I don't have any children. But all of them are mine and they were certainly mine that night as I see them being tortured with this tear gas. You wouldn't like it. I know you wouldn't like it. So why would you accept that? The police officers came in with the wrong attitude.
Ma'am, your time is up.
With the wrong attitude. I hope that you guys consider and think about that and keep that skating rink open as it is something that is important in the community.
Thank you.